Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, July 6, 2016. At this time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of May 18th and the minutes of the regular meeting of May 25th, 2016 be approved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? Motion passes unanimously. Approval of the warrants?
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant 54A-16 in the amount of $62,061.27. Warrant 54B-16 in the amount of $6,075.14, both payroll. Warrant 54C-16 in the amount of $58,978.40, accounts payable. Warrant number 1A-17 in the amount of $16,063.17, payroll. Warrant 1B-17 in the amount of $20,375. And warrant 1C-17 in the amount of $849,855.14, last two being accounts payable, be approved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I just want to mention that that warrant, that's $849,000, that's the first accounts payable warrant of the new fiscal year. And the reason it's so high is because the Bristol County Retirement Assessment is on that warrant, and that's $711,360. That's an annual payment that we pay up front.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? That motion carries unanimously. Correspondents? We have an article in the Cooperative Advantage Newsletter titled "Paying It Forward." Anybody like to do the honors?
Oh, we did, if you'd like. Go ahead. So, this is an article. I'm just going to read it directly as written. Recently, a group of folks from Co-op crossed the street at Somerset Ave for their morning cup of joe at Dunkin' Donuts. While this group of six decided what they wanted, ordered, were collecting their food and drinks and preparing to pay, the cashier informed them that their order had already been paid for by another customer. It turns out that a local policeman was performing his own act of kindness by treating all to a free breakfast. The group was so pleased that together, they decided that they would pay it forward and do the same thing once a month. We wonder who will be next to benefit from a random act of kindness. The officer's identity is a mystery to us, but if you know who it is, give him a huge thank you from all of us. He started some wonderful acts of kindness.
We don't know who it was.
I promise.
Second piece of correspondence is a letter from Myrna Santos of the Dayton Historical Commission. We have a letter addressed to the Board of Selectmen. Dear Mr. Cronin and Board members, the Dayton Historical Commission held its regular June meeting last evening, which was June 28th, and discussed the fact that we have only six members at present after the resignation of Christine Pacheco, and our board structure requires seven. We would like to have a full complement for FY '17, as we have become ever more active as a board than in past years. We voted to request that the Selectmen announce our need for members. We hope to have at least one or perhaps two appointed, with hopefully an additional alternate, because Richard Gunther has told us that time constraints on his already busy life need to be lightened, and he expects to be leaving us as a regular voting member in the very near future, perhaps as early as fall of 2016. His excellent participation would be sorely missed should that departure occur. Thank you in advance for making this announcement. We will be speaking with people who have shown interest in the Historical Commission, asking that if they do not already have membership requests on file with the Selectmen's office, they can fill those out and give them to you so that you have a pool of interested folks from whom to choose our new member or members. The Commission appreciates your kind assistance with this request. Sincerely yours, Myrna Santos, Chairman of Dayton Historical Commission and Town Historian. So, ladies and gentlemen, there is a... one opening on the Historical Commission, and they would like to put on an additional alternate, just to have somebody as like a substitute. If you are interested, please stop by the Board of Selectmen's office. We have the forms to fill out here, and we'll pass your name on to Myrna Santos.
Are you still looking for somebody on CPC?
No, I believe that position may be filled shortly.
Okay.
One little time delay, sorry. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call (508) 669-6431 for more information. There is a prescription drug drop box now located at the Dayton Police Station. It is limited to pill form prescriptions only. You may contact the Dayton Police Station at (508) 669-6711 for more information. The Board of Selectmen will be having their next regular meeting on Wednesday, July 20th, 2016. There will also be a Board of Health meeting that night if needed. And just a reminder for those people who wish to be placed on agendas for either one of these meetings, the new published policy book for the Town of Dayton, which we approved and voted on approximately three months ago, it does have a policy as far as being placed on agendas at our Board of Selectmen or Board of Health meetings. You should have all your requests into this office by Thursday prior to the Wednesday night meetings. So, if you want to be put on the agenda to avoid this last minute sometime confusion and 11 o'clock meetings, 12 o'clock meetings, have your requests in Thursday prior to the next meeting. The Dayton Public Library has museum passes available for residents with a library card. Passes include Buttonwood Park Zoo, Battleship Cove, Museum of Science, the Salem Witch Museum, Mystic Aquarium, the Hall at Patriot Place, and others. They are available on a first come, first served basis. You can reserve them by phone, in person, or online at www.daytonlibrary.org. The Food Bank Distribution will take place Saturday, July 23rd, 2016, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. There will be a celebration on Saturday, July 30th, from noon time to 5:00 p.m. behind Town Hall at the Lions Pavilion, in honor of the Dayton Herbert Falcons, winning baseball team, winning the Division II Eastern Mass Day Finals. There'll be a small parade followed by a cookout. All are invited. Help us celebrate this huge achievement. If you would like to help out with the event or would like to donate, please call the Selectmen's office at (508) 669-6431 and choose option one on the main menu. Meetings for the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health are now posted to YouTube under the name Town of Dayton Meetings. You may go to the Town website and follow the link to Dayton's YouTube page, or you can go to YouTube and type in Town of Dayton Meetings. If you need further assistance, call the Board of Selectmen's office and ask for Selectmen's office. We do have one more. We were informed by the owner of the trash pickup vendor for the upcoming three years that effective July 11th, 2016, recyclables will be picked up on a weekly basis, and a new schedule will go into effect for trash pickup, which will be done Monday through Friday. So, it's all five days for trash pickup to cover this town, and along with it, the same day, you can put your recyclables out every single week. We do have this... we do have this map, because everybody's going to be affected. It may be a different day of which your pickup day will be. For instance, mine was Wednesday, and now it's going to become a Friday pickup. What we plan on doing is we have a list of all the streets in alphabetical order. Where you purchase your bags, the vendor, the store owner will have these lists there, so you can just look at your street. Probably look at it once, you're going to know when your trash pickup is, and it'll be that way, Monday through Friday. Bear with us that if there is a holiday in the course of a week, then it's going to be just like it was in the past. Everything is moved up one day. And that occurs with a lot of the Monday holidays. Nancy, anything else to add?
I'm just looking at this street list. Mine doesn't change. What I would say to you watching this tonight, get a piece of paper and a pencil. Before the meeting ends, I will read this list of streets. I will only read it once. Listen for your street and note the date, the day of the week, all right? And as Dean said, these will be available around town, but I'm sure there's a number of you that are out there right now who may not need bags. So, be prepared to write down what your pickup date will be for trash and recycling. And if there is a holiday, as was said, there will be a Saturday pickup. Everything will move by a day. So, let's see how fast we get through everything. Okay? Before we adjourn.
Any old business?
No old business.
No old business. New business. Review, discuss an act, a job estimate from John Delano and Associates. Mrs. Bullock?
As reported at the last meeting, Tom Ferry and I met with Roy Delano from John Delano and Associates, and we walked the area on Center Street from the Aggie School to Somerset Avenue, 138, where the sidewalk will be extended from the Aggie School on the south side. We have a proposal from John Delano and Associates. And I will just briefly read this. The scope of the work to be performed, existing condition survey, and design of sidewalk from Bristol County Agricultural School to Somerset Avenue, and preparation of easement plans. Thank you for contacting us to provide you with our professional services. The total estimated fee for the above described services is $9,225. Our invoices will be based on the hours worked on this job. If additional work is requested, that is not part of the scope of services. The work will be considered over and above, and will be billed accordingly. The following and those on the reverse are terms of this work proposal. I'm not reading all those. Number one, the work will begin after receipt of the signed authorization. The balance of the fee is due upon receipt. Please read this proposal and the standard conditions, so forth and so on. On the cost of $9,225, there is a note. Note, this estimate does not include filing fees with any federal, state, county, or local agencies, boards, or commissions. It does not include expenses for paid details if required. This estimate does not include our time to attend meetings. If you request our attendance at meetings, the time will be charged at $120 per hour with a two-hour minimum, which includes preparation for travel to the meeting. This is a... I'll call it a complete package. In order for us to move ahead with that project, obviously, the land has to be surveyed, the plants have to be drawn, the easements have to be identified by lot number and owner and all of that. All of this has to be done before we can contact the property owners. As reported at the previous meeting, the board has sent letters to all of the property owners advising them that we're moving ahead with the project. So, this is the basic work that has to be done on any kind of a project of this type. And this company has been excellent to deal with. They've worked with the town for years. I've worked with them on three bridge projects, and I can certainly personally recommend that and will make the motion that the board approve this contract with John Delano and Associates for the proposed amount, $9,225.
Seconded. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? There are none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? That motion carries unanimously. I think this company goes back. Next on the new business, review, discuss an act to appoint Jack Taylor to the Community Preservation Committee as an at-large member.
That answers that question.
Has come to our attention that Jack Taylor has applied to be an at-large member to the CPC. For those of you that were wondering, an at-large, these are appointments on this committee that are made by the Board of Selectmen. The other members are from various different committees and departments within the town that state mandates. So, this is one of, I believe, three, Joe?
Four.
Four at-large members that this board appoints. Do I have a motion to appoint Jack Taylor as an at-large member?
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? That motion carries.
I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
You said, which term is it filling, four, three, or two or one years' position? Is this three or three years' position?
Three.
Three years, 2019.
Did we have another one that we left off?
Yeah.
That didn't get on here. I knew there was another one. We do have a volunteer information form, a request from Julia Gerren, to be appointed to the Cable Committee. She has been volunteering and training under the Cable Committee now here at Dayton for over a year. I entertain a motion to appoint Julia Gerren as a Cable Committee member.
So moved.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? That passes unanimously.
So, I think this means only the Historical Commission is looking for members. That's good.
Right. And then we're going to discuss, or we'll make the announcement again, that Bylaw Committee that was dissolved a couple of years ago, we're now looking to initiate that, anybody that's interested in perhaps being on that committee, Bylaw Committee, that's to evaluate, research, and look at our bylaws on a continuous basis, whether some should be edited, changed, updated, or in some cases, dissolved.
And also the Town Administrator Committee.
Town Administrator Committee, that's right. We want to start that up again.
That's right. And we have the Board of Health Operational Committee, and I've just got to finish summarizing the tasks that we want them to take care of, then we can get that out.
Bylaw. Other than that, we're in pretty good position. That marathon meeting we had a few weeks ago, when we announced all the reappointments, I believe there was 191 appointments that we made that night. That does not include all our appointments. Those were only those that were coming up for reappointment. We still have an awful lot of committee members who their term has got another year or two, in some cases, three or four years left. So, you know, hats off to all these people who come onto these committees, and really, they help run this government, whether people realize it or not, and our hats go off to all of yous. Any reports?
Yeah, I got two short ones. I went to the July 4th reading of the Declaration of Independence at the community church. It was very well attended. We did start out with a walk through the cemetery. The Minutemen were there. They did ceremoniously fire their guns, and then they lined up, and we walked between them into the church. And former Selectman Patrick Menges read the Declaration of Independence and gave a little history about what led up to it. What was really nice was that, excuse me, the makeup of the audience was not only very young children with their parents, but also some of our senior citizens. And it was, it's nice to know that there are young parents out there that are concerned enough that they brought their children to learn about this important event, Declaration of Independence. I should also mention, before we went into the church, Pastor Dave Stewart read a letter, and it was from John Adams to Abigail Adams, and he was talking to his wife about the importance of what was going to happen when the Declaration was going to be announced. So, that added to the event. But that was, that was very nice. It was done very well. Good job, Patrick. The other thing I want to mention is, over periods of time, a number of people have asked me about drainage on Bedford Street, and when's the road going to get paved? And on last week's posting, there were comments about the fact that the road needs to be paved, and I explained that part of the problem with that road is, it's just not the surface of the road. The biggest problem is what's under the ground, which is the old drainage system going back to probably when the mill was built and all those houses were built. But I have an update from Tom Ferry. And what Tom is saying is that I had mentioned in my response on Facebook that the town has two priority projects right now. One's the sidewalk on Center Street. The other one is the Astroseneca Main Street Drainage Project. And the person from Astroseneca is currently on vacation, so that project is on hold until he returns. So, Tom's response was, Nancy, as far as Spring and Park Street work, we would like to dig across Park Street, replace both basins, and add at least one cleanout to the main line that flows by there. We may start actual work this Friday by cutting the concrete and dig next week. This work needs to be done before any other work that upstream is to be considered. Upstream, he's talking about north of, probably west, in the Bedford Street area. So, it's not only the drainage under Bedford Street, Park Street, and Spring Street, that's the, those are the streets that Spring runs along the face of the mill, and Park is that wide, almost boulevard on the other side. And there are drainage problems there. And in order to begin this whole project, which will include eventually Bedford Street, he's addressing this now. So, that's when he says, this work needs to be done before any other work that is upstream is to be considered. This we hope to do ahead of the work scheduled for Main Street and the drainage upgrades. Okay? If we have time before the Main Street work, we may start sidewalk repairs at Spring and Pearl Street. As always, people may call me with any questions. That's, this is from Tom Ferry. The other area that was mentioned when Selectman Menges was on board was the sidewalk deterioration on Spring and Pearl Streets. And that was something that Tom has had on the list. So, again, depending upon the work schedule, because right now it's dry, so they're not cutting grasses off and mowing lawns. He's going to try to get some of this in before the work will start up again on Main Street. So, we just pass this along so that the people on Bedford Street understand that there are preliminary tasks that have to be done, and they're going to start doing this.
Thank you. We have one acknowledgement for an anonymous donation to Primetime in the amount of $30. Do I hear a motion? Accept the donation of $30 to Primetime?
So moved.
I second that.
Motion's made, seconded. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it? It passes unanimously. Tonight, we have Mr. Tim Reins with us tonight. Those of you that were with us last week, there was a covenant that was signed in regards to the Winslow Davis House between the Community Preservation Committee and Historical Society?
Dayton Historical Society.
Dayton Historical Society, which there was a little, a couple errors in the wording, and Mr. Reins has asked if we could take care of the business by resigning that covenant tonight. Joe, anything else you'd like to say?
The society should be done with a meeting at the library, and you have to be on by eight or nine, so they should be assured we don't have to do this on camera. It's not necessary.
No, no. No, I just wanted to say.
Anyone else, we don't file, see if they so.
We promise, you know, we can certainly bring them in tonight and take care of it. Anything else that you'd like to...
Just have my list.
Sure. That'll kill a little time.
Okay, you all had time to get your pencils and paper. I'm only going to read this list once, and some of these streets, don't ask me where they are. Okay, I'll read the name of the street and the day in a five-day week with no holidays that it will be picked up. Again, remember that if there is a holiday, there'll be a one-day delay. So, I will start. Anderson Drive, Friday. Andrews Street, Tuesday. Anne Circle, Friday. Arrowhead Road, Monday. Autumn Street, Tuesday. Bailey Street, Tuesday. Beach Street, Monday. Bedford Street, Tuesday. Barrowby Drive, Thursday. Billy's Lane, Friday. Birch Street, Monday. Boat Ramp Road, Monday. Bow Street, Tuesday. Bradley Road, Wednesday. Briowood Drive, Thursday. Brig Street, Tuesday. Brook Street, Wednesday. Bruce Lane, Wednesday. Buck Plain Road, Wednesday. Cameron Drive, Monday. Carriage Park Drive, Thursday. Cedar Street, Friday. Cedarwood Circle, Thursday. Center Street, the bridge to Somerset Ave. Center Street, the bridge to Somerset Avenue. So that's Center Street up to 138. That will be on Monday. Center Street, Somerset Avenue to Williams. So that's from the intersection west. Center Street, Somerset Ave to Williams will be on Wednesday. Chase Avenue, Wednesday. Chase Street, Tuesday. Cherry Street, Monday. Cheryl Road, Wednesday. Chestnut Street, Thursday. Cobbs Lane, Monday. Council Oak Way, Wednesday. Country Hill Drive, Monday. County Street, Monday. Cortlandt Road, Friday. Deborah Jane Court, Friday. Dayton Woods Circle, Wednesday. Dayton Woods Road, Wednesday. Eagle Trace, Monday. Elm Street, from the Somerset Line to Main Street, that's on Monday. Elm Street, from Main Street to Somerset Avenue, that is Wednesday. Emmis Way, Monday. Estabrook Avenue, Monday. Fairway Drive, Thursday. Fairway Landing, Monday. Fieldstone Drive, Friday. Forest Street, Tuesday. Fresh Meadow Lane, Thursday. Galway Drive, Wednesday. Gray Terrace, Tuesday. Green Acres Road, Tuesday. Hot Street, Monday. Hillcrest Drive, Monday. Horton Street, from Williams to Oak Street, Thursday. Horton Street, from Oak Street to Wellington Street, Friday. Jenna Drive, Friday. Jennifer Lane, Monday. John Street, Friday. Joseph E. Warner Boulevard, Tuesday. Julian's Way, Thursday. Karen Road, Wednesday. Carrie Lane, Wednesday. Kirk Terrace, Thursday. Lewis Street, Friday. Lilia Lane, Wednesday. Lincoln Avenue, Tuesday. Linden Street, Monday. Lou Lane, Tuesday. Louise Lane, Wednesday. Main Street, from County Street to Water Street, Monday. Main Street, County Street to Williams Street, Wednesday. Mannament Avenue, Wednesday. Maple Street, Thursday. Maple Swamp Road, Thursday. Maris Lane, Wednesday. Massasoit Road, Wednesday. Marion Avenue, Monday. Maynard Lane, Thursday. Middle Street, Tuesday. Milliken Avenue, Tuesday. Milk Street, Wednesday. Miller's Lane, Friday. Mockingbird Lane, Wednesday. Montero Drive, Thursday. Mount Hope Street, Tuesday. Muddy Cove Lane, Monday. North Street, Thursday. Oak Grove Drive, Thursday. Oak Street, Thursday. Old Somerset Avenue, Tuesday. Old Wellington Street, Friday. Old Williams Street, Friday. Palmer Street, Wednesday. Park Avenue, Monday. Park Street, Tuesday. Pearl Street, Tuesday. Pilot Rock Drive, Monday. Pine Hill Road, Thursday. Pine Street, Wednesday. Pleasant Street, Monday. Portside Landing, Monday. Prospect Street, Tuesday. Purchase Street, Friday. Putters Way, Thursday. Rebecca Road, Wednesday. Regional Road, Friday. Riverside Avenue, Tuesday. Rose Terrace, Tuesday. Roland Drive, Wednesday. Sandpiper Drive, Monday. Sawmill Lane, Wednesday. School Lane, Wednesday. School Street, Tuesday. Sesame Street, Thursday. Shop Slot Road, Friday. Sylvia Way, Wednesday. Smith Street, Friday. Somerset Avenue, Monday. Sunnys Way, Friday. Spring Street, Tuesday. Spruce Street, Monday. Stansion Drive, Thursday. Stoddard Avenue, Tuesday. Stonegate Landing, Monday. Summer Street, Tuesday. Susan Road, Wednesday. Swanee Drive, Tuesday. Tanglewood Road, Friday. Tiger Lily Road, Thursday. Tommy's Way, Friday. Tony's Way, Wednesday. Tremont Street, Tuesday. Walker Street, Thursday. Walnut Street, Monday. Washington Street, Monday. Water Street, Monday. Waterford Circle, Wednesday. Wellington Street, Friday. Wheeler Street, Thursday. Whitmarsh Lane, Wednesday. William Street, from Shop Slot Road to Horton Street, Friday. William Street. Horton Street to Winthrop Street, Thursday. Winter Street, Tuesday, and Winthrop Street, Thursday. The end.
Very good.
There are streets I never heard of.
About ten of them I haven't heard of.
So anyhow, if you missed any of that, folks, just watch the rerun. But we will put these out, uh, and try to get them out and get them posted around the community at the stores, wherever we can put them. Um, I'll see if the post office will take one since it's just a, it's a public notice. So I'll see if both post offices are willing to, uh, put this there. But you can check your local businesses or, if you have any questions, just call the Selectmen's Office Board of Health, and somebody will be able to help you.
Very good, very good. Brett, you have anything?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I don't have anything else. This is gonna be a lot easier in our office when people call in because instead of looking for the streets on a map, when it's just outline of areas.
I don't know if Cable can pick this up. This was a map that was provided to us by Borges Brothers, but you can just see, in looking at this, why we have gone to a five-day collection period. See all those colors? That used to be done in three days. And now if you look, we have purple, and we have yellow, and red, and blue, and green. Uh, that's how the town is now divided up. And that's actually based on, uh, Mr. Borges going out and doing runs himself. He was out there today, as a matter of fact, doing a trash run, uh, checking this out. So, uh, as I say, the town has really grown, more streets, more people, more trash. But the good news is, is a lot more recycling. So keep up the good work, folks.
Very good. I know the last two times I've talked to Mr. Borges, he, uh, he's continually remarked on the, the job that the people in Dayton do on their recyclables. Uh, how, when he first started picking up the recyclables, it would be a half a bag of recyclables or that little bin that we had, and three bags of trash. Well, it's now reversed. So people have become very educated in what is recyclable, what's not, and doing a tremendous job. So, uh, this weekly pickup, I, I think everybody's gonna see the big difference. You won't, especially in the fall, when it's windy and the weather changes, you won't see all these milk bottles and water bottles blowing all over the streets and, you know, flying everywhere. Uh, it'll be picked up every seven days, actually. And, um, I think it's the best for all of us. And keep up the good work on recycling. Everyone's doing a great job.
I will mention that if I didn't read your street, you are probably living in a private area where the town does not provide trash pickup. There is one section, Hunter Hill, uh, that I can see here that is not part of town pickup. So you weren't omitted on, uh, you weren't omitted inadvertently. We just don't provide that pickup there.
That's part of their fee. Well, if there's nothing else, Karen, do you have anything?
I don't.
You don't?
Thank you for asking.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Uh, good night, ladies and gentlemen, and, uh, stay out of that heat, especially the way it was today. Drink, uh, plenty of clear liquids.
Water.
Non-alcohol, please. And, um, be careful of how much exertion you actually put out there. Uh, good night, everybody. Thank you very much, Cable, and, uh, have a nice night.